I'd like to call this session of Liquid City Council for Monday, May 13th, to order. And in the first day of election filing season, we have news from election results, actually, from our sister city, Bawang Lo Union in the Philippines. And Dr. Menchi De Guzman, the wife of the term-limited mayor, has defeated a rather questionable opponent. And so it's good news for our sister city. If the other guy had won, I would have to recommend not visiting. But they're in good hands. It's a great family, and I hope to see them again. First item of business we have is the Waste Connections update. And for this, we have Mr. Chris Geraldis of Waste Connections District Manager. Please come up to the table.
Thanks for having me. So I'm Chris Geraldis, District Manager for Pierce County Refuge of Waste Connections. Address is 1652. Do you need the address at this session? Okay, good. So really appreciate the opportunity to talk to everybody here about what's going on. And I'm sure most everybody knows globally the effects that have happened with recycling in China. But it really has gotten a lot bigger than just China. We've now been kicked out of six different countries with our material because the standards are not being met of which they can produce a good material to reuse out of. With that, some program changes that have been adopted. We'll go over with not only Pierce County, but the WRA, which is Washington Refuge Recycle Association, the WSRA, which is Washington State Recycling Association, and the UTC, which is Utility Transportation Commission. And then again, one of our local recycle vendors, Pioneer Recycling, have all changed the acceptable material list of what we can actually put in the recycling. So it's time now to start reeducating people. And with that, we've got some changes that need to be made with the acceptable list that's in the contract. Some items that are in there that need to be removed and amended. So that's one of the things that I wanted to talk about is, you know, the shredded paper, the flower pots and refrigerator boxes were the items that were on Pioneer and the county's list that were acceptable that have been removed. Beyond that, the contract has other items such as foil, paper cups, and aseptic cartons on the acceptable list that we need to remove as well. So that we can make the list basically the same as the county because we have people that cross borders from city to county that work and live, or vice versa. So we're trying to get that united list that everybody, no matter where they live and work in Pierce County, understands what is recycled and what isn't accordingly. So the other items is the plastic. So a lot of people use numbers, and this was really brought to light recently. I don't remember. I think it was a plaque that I got that I ordered that came in a bag that had upholstery at the top. And at the bottom of the bag, it had number five recycling stamped on it. And it was because it was a poly bag and it had poly strands in it, they labeled it as number five recycling, which is a poly plastic that's good. But what is acceptable, basically, is buckets as a number five recycling. So it was really just, you know, brought to light again, and this was recently, how bad, you know, the labeling is in using numbers. So I know in the study sessions we did with the county, what we talked about is getting rid of the use of numbers in all our literature and all our contracts and talk about the actual containers themselves of, you know, soda pop bottles and milk jugs and buckets type, you know, label it as such rather than the numbers because the manufacturers can put whatever number they want, basically, on the material if it has a portion of that content in it. So I think that's really, really important as we drive the message and re-educate and roll this out into the communities that we serve. Any questions on any of that? Okay. The other item that I want to discuss is rate adjustment. This is a tough one, and I know in the contract that we, you know, it says that we basically own the material for market and sale. But the reason I wanted to talk about is because what has happened is a global market change more than, you know, we've kind of had the history of the recycling over the past, you know, 15 to 20 years that has kind of fluctuated up and down a little bit, but it's always stayed in a range of following petroleum like most things do. And now with the change, you know, that range roughly was around $60 a ton of profit. Well, you call it profit or rebate is what we're getting to offset the trucking and everything. Now, as of today's market, it's negative $108.96 a ton. So the market swing is over $170 a ton difference.
How much does Waste Connections net on tipping fees on its LRI interest?
I'm sorry?
Waste Connections owns part of LRI.
Yes.
The dump. And so if something doesn't go to recycling and goes to the dump, there's a tipping fee, right?
Yeah. And that's $164 a ton.
And what does, yeah, what's LRI, I mean, Waste Connections' share of a typical tipping fee, and how does that relate to the?
To be honest, I don't run that portion of it, so I couldn't tell you. I mean, I don't know what their profit share is on that portion of the business. I just run the hauling company for Pierce County Refuge. We are separate entities, kind of standalone, so. I would imagine, like everything else, I mean, we try to be between that 15 to, you know, 20% range, depending on what we're doing, how much investment has to be done in it. So I couldn't tell you, though.
I guess my point is that, so it's, if things are diverted to the recycling chain, there is a recovery that's made by Waste Connections based on what they could sell it for, and that's built in to the business expectation of the rate structure. But when that recycling chain is disrupted and things go to the dump, the parent gets money for that, too.
Yeah.
So it isn't a one-for-one loss.
Right. And I mean, so that all comes through Pioneer Recycling. So no matter what that is, I mean, as far as, you know, I would look at it as like our contract with you guys is the city top right here. There's also, you know, what we deal with Pioneer, they charge accordingly. So it used to be a rebate, but now it's a charge. So they're the ones incurring the cost to LRI. So they're charging the hauler accordingly to the costs that they pass through. So as the hauling company, I'm not seeing anything. Is there definitely probably a profit margin at the landfill? Absolutely. I mean, we wouldn't be in business without it. But they're also seeing the volume. So the profit margin hasn't increased, it's just the volume has increased. So they're doing more work and producing more tons and burying more tons. So it's, their profit margin hasn't increased due to this, it's just a matter of their volume has increased and the tons they see.
Questions? Mr. Ren Center.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like, at this point, to ask for clarification on our packet sort of on the cover sheet of your presentation.
Yeah.
Under the, that's the very top of the second page, it says, "Only three cities left in Pierce County to financially support the market change: Lakewood, Bonnie Lake, and Dupont." I'm not sure what that means.
So throughout Pierce County, we operate under multiple contracts, whether it's Murray's or Pierce County Refuge, we're both owned by Waste Connections as a hauler. And so we've had to make adjustments due to the market change, the global market change of recycling itself, and ask for support financially to help with the change. And basically, Lakewood, Bonnie Lake, and Dupont are the only three cities left in the county that have not, you know, we haven't been able to get the change or the support of yet with financial support.
And of those changes that were made by the county municipalities, how many were, how many of them were done because of the timing was such that their contracts were up to be renewed, renegotiated, unlike ours, which still has years to run?
Yeah. That's a good question. And I know on my side of the company, and I can't speak for the Murray's, I think Murray's was able to get all theirs just through study sessions and going to council and going to staff and having those discussions. And some of them have it written in contract. But for Pierce County Refuge, Stillcome is the only one that was contract renewal that through discussion we were able to change. And during that change, we put in an annual review of the rates with an adjustment in there so that annually we'd be adjusting these rates. And that's one of the things that, you know, I want to talk about with asking for this. I think it's the, you know, the right thing to do is if pricing comes back, we give back to the citizens and reduce that rate on an annual adjustment.
So, you know, before all our times, when Lake was incorporated in 1996, decided not to operate solid waste utility, it was then LeMay's request to have a contracted rate with certain adjustments and to take on the business risk instead of having a UTC-like rate-based structure.
Yeah.
I don't recall if there was ever any disclosure of the profit or loss of LeMay for all 20-plus years under the contracted rate structure. And it seems like what you're advocating is a UTC-rate-based structure outside of the contract so that the citizens of Lakewood would absorb the business risk. Do we get to look back and see how much money was made over the life of this arrangement and readjust the whole scheme?
I get what you're saying. I mean, it's, I mean, I wasn't part of that discussion. And I don't, you know, I don't know why the decisions were made to go that route. But other than the fact of the knowledge that I have is that historically, like I said earlier, there was a little fluctuation in recycling. But when you looked at it over a 10-year graph, I mean, it was pretty stabilized of, you know, ebbs and flows that stabilized in the pricing market that was financially, you're able to sustain and perform the services. What we have now is just, you know, the market has completely collapsed. And I guess that's why I'm here today asking about this because what was and what is now are two completely different recycle worlds. And short-term, there continues month after month to get worse. There is some hope out there. There's been 23 announcements of facilities within the U.S. expanding or developing over the next couple of years. So there is hope out there, but pricing ever going back to what it was, it's a lot more, it probably won't happen because it's so much more expensive to truck the material across the U.S. to these different markets than it was to, as a backhaul to China on the barges. So.
Mr. Bulking.
There's a lot of information in this presentation. There's, we can, there's a lot of information in this presentation. Ask him that he's, because there's financial information and stuff that I don't completely understand. So I'm going to ask before we ask more questions, kind of take it in different directions that he can go through this if we could, because I'm not sure that I follow all the dollar amounts and percentages.
Yeah. And I mean, we have all this in front of us, too, just to highlight some of the rate adjustments and the whys, you know, why are we asking for this? And why did we wait to ask for it, right? So we, currently, the stipulation we're under is China national sword, which they kicked us out of their country, said, "We don't want your material anymore, it's garbage." In 2013, there was China's green fence policy that was enacted, and it fizzled out after a couple of months, and things were back to normal, pricing structure came back, and it was just a hiccup in the market. So we were kind of waiting, you know, market stabilization, is this a repeat? China's kind of calling, you know, are we going to call China's bluff? What's going on? So it wasn't. And now it's, you know, like I said, six other countries have said, you know, tried to take our material, and there was so much waste in it that they basically told us, "No, we can't take this anymore either." So, you know, looking at item number three there, the UTC price change of $2.58, which is really in line, and we look at each individual municipality as a standalone of, you know, by the customer counts and the actual tons we're bringing in to come up with the numbers you'll see later. And then again, I've mentioned the creating an annual adjustment for recycling. If this is a path that we venture down, that we would need to replace existing language to do that, though. I'm going to skip the next one, then go down six. Again, China, Indonesia, India, Vietnam, Malaysia, and Taiwan are all countries that have no longer accepted our material. They tried and just couldn't accept the contamination. Item number two, recycle labeling. So this is something with the global market change that is a suggestion from Pierce County, UTC, and the other recycling associations, is not to label the carts, but to send educational flyers through the mail, magnets, stuff like that. We have websites now and a lot of apps and stuff that people can have on their phone for recycling. So rather than label the carts and change it in two years and have the extra costs and everything else, and the wrong material out there is just, use the resources we have and not put a label on the cart other than recycling only no glass. So that's what we've been doing, so. And then the last item on this is the CPI adjustment, which the Seattle Tacoma-Bremerton no longer exists. That's what's written in the contract. It's changed, you know, what people are using now is a Seattle Tacoma Bellevue. And then there is actually one that a lot of people don't know about, which is the CPI Urban User Water Sewer and Trash Collection Services. So we can look at that of, you know, I know it's a ways away now, but as we near the future of our annual CPIs, I mean, it's nice to have this, you know, we've talked with staff and their understanding of the change, and not something that needs to be remedied right away, but I don't want to push out five years and if I'm not here and I move on to bigger and better things, somebody else is asking to make this change. I think I have to do my due diligence to get it corrected, so. All right. This is where we probably have questions on the next one, the rate structuring. So this is the residential recycling, looking at the average commodity value of 2017, which came out to $22.62 a ton. April, the commodity value is negative 104, which is the loss of 561%, or $126.92 a ton. So what we took then was your recycle count for customers in 2018, the total tonnage for 2018, and then broke that out to the average tons per month. And then doing the math between the average cents per month and the customers per month came up with the loss per month, and then backed that into the total customers again. So it was the average tons and the price, sorry, for the total loss. And then to come up with the customer per month loss, it was the total loss divided by the customer count. Any questions on any of that?
My question isn't specifically on what you just said, because I'd be lying if I said I understood every word you said.
Yeah.
But I want to back up a bit. In a past life, I was a president of a union that represented the faculty at a local community college. And we used to have these biannual discussions over contract, like we're having tonight. And some of those discussions had to do with rate changes, like how much do we pay our part-time faculty, or how much do we pay our full-time faculty? And in every one of those discussions, we had before us a list of proposals. And one of the things that I'm having difficulty getting my mind around this is, you want a change to the contract based on rate adjustment. Could I see a specific proposal, so stating? Because I don't see that here, sir.
Yeah.
And it would help clarify my thinking, since you're coming to us and asking us to say, "Sure, we've got this contract with you that runs until 2025." You are a globally traded company on the New York Stock Exchange, and you have a profit margin. Waste Connections isn't losing money anywhere when you look at it from that 30,000-foot level. And yet I can't see a proposal as to specifically what you want and how, why I, as one person on this council, should agree to a rate change.
Yeah. And I understand a proposal is necessary, but I thought it would be important to have discussion first so that we're, some understanding. I mean, some people are up on, you know, the recycle changes and everything, and not everybody pays attention to it, though, so. I kind of, and it could be backwards.
I would pay attention to a proposal far easier than I would pay attention to this because at least I have something that I can ground my thinking in. Here I don't.
Okay.
One who's guilty of throwing the flower pots into the recycle bin, I understand part of the challenge. As to the proposal issue, if there's an inquiry into reopening the contract or adjusting the contract with regard to this, my question to you is, is there an opportunity to perhaps add something to the contract that provides a citizen's value if we were to consider an increase in the rate for the customer? And the reason why I throw an idea out there is because the negotiated community cleanup days, if you will, have been hugely popular. The citizens have loved that. And I know that comes at some expense, obviously, to do that as part of the contract, though it was negotiated specifically. I don't know if it would be of value, but maybe if we were to add a third day or, you know, four days once a quarter in exchange for something, at least the citizens might feel like they're getting something for the rate increase in the overall price of their service. I throw that out there as something to chew on.
Yeah.
So I'd also like to see kind of a flow-through as to Waste Connections benefit from its ownership in LRI. Because I just looked it up, and the tipping fees for LRI are $135.04 a month, at least they were last year, it's the highest in the state of any municipal solid waste facility. And so if you're looking at your chart, your loss per ton is 126.92. I assume that includes all, that's basically the hauling costs, essentially.
Yeah.
And you have to take it somewhere. So then, is that all hauling costs?
I don't know.
126, how's that break down? What components are that? Is that if you give it to Pioneer and how much it costs to have them take it?
So that's all what Pioneer charges us, is that rate that I?
I'd like to see what happens if you haul it to LRI's facility and dump it as municipal solid waste because it's not recyclable. And then take what the marginal net for LRI would be on 135. So for example, if LRI has a 50% interest, I don't know what it is, but 50% interest is, and LRI is held by Waste Connections, that would be approaching $70 a ton gross. It's not going to take It's not going to take a proportional share of ownership of, of overhead to dump an additional ton, it's only going to be a marginal share, so it may only be at $10 a ton to, to the cost of dumping, you know, it may be hiring a lot of extra employees at LRI. And see what the net for the enterprise Waste Connections, the publicly traded company, the real net impact is. And, and I think we'd be in a much better position to look at, at a, a reasonable proposal if we knew what's coming out of the shareholders' pocket for the business risks that they took. Because in, in Washington, for the most part, like here with G-Haulers, it's just, and with, with the contract, I'm familiar with it at LRI, it's annuity. The company owns, it has very little business risk outside the recycling area, and it's, it just is a percentage of the gross that goes, flows through to the corporate profits. And, and I'm not against people making profit, you have to make a profit to do this, we've chosen to con, contract it, because presumably it's being done more efficiently than if we tried to run our own trucks around town. But at the same time, if you're asking for a concession on a negotiated contract, I'd like to see what the true all-in impact is to Waste Connections. And I know you're just, you're one silo, I know how, I know how it works. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to what would be the information and the backup information in a proposal when you get around to putting one to it, one of the reasons why we contracted in the model of contract that we, that we have is that we were trying to provide some level of consistency with a formulated way that rates would go up, using, and we chose to use a CPI. And I understand that it's important that the CPI that we specified in the contract technically doesn't exist anymore, and so we have to substitute it with perhaps one of the two that you have, that makes sense to use the Seattle Tacoma Bellevue as a, oh, if, if Seattle Tacoma Bremerton doesn't exist anymore, and to do that. But that, we also did a contract for a number of years, and we did it with an understanding at the time that we did the contract, that Waste Connections was going to make money, because they were a for-profit business, and the contract was structured that they would make money, but that the rates would be acceptable to us on behalf of the residents of Lakewood for the service that we have. But there was a part of, one of the reasons for getting into a contract where you were going to make money is you were going to make money, but you were assuming some risk should now what has happened, happen. And yet, you know, the information that you've provided here is a snapshot in time of 2018, but if I go back to the very beginning of the contract, it perhaps looks a little different because there were years of where you were more than making
Right.
your, your costs to be able to go and do that. And so I sort of like to see if you're going to put forward to say, the changes in the market have been so extreme that it makes sense to do that, of look at all the years that the contract has been in effect. And with, and so we can also extrapolate how, how it would be for the remaining years on the contract, to be able to go through and do that. So when you bring a proposal back, if, 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 you know, the life of the contract numbers are what I would, would like to see, as opposed to just a snapshot of what's happening in 2019.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Can you give me, can you give us some idea of what these other cities that have agreed to rate adjustments, have agreed to on a per-month basis?
Yeah, there's, I mean, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but they're right in line with that UTC adjustment, somewhere, you know, in that low to mid $2 range, you know, $2.20 to $2.60.
Okay.
And like I said, we, what we actually did on the ones that we've made an adjustment on is looked at the actual customer count, the actual tons. So it's real numbers, instead of, you know, just taking the UTC or what it is. And every, every city in, in the state of Washington is a little different in how they recycle, and the geography really plays a part in that. So I think it's important that we look at as, as a group, you know, as a city alone, and that's what we've done. So there is different prices for each city, but they're all right around in that range.
So we're left with really, and I'm assuming you're going to do an educational campaign, newspaper, cardboard, I guess magazines and catalogs, steel, steel cans, aluminum cans, and beverage bottles?
Yeah.
Is really what we're left with.
Correct.
And everything else, and then the other things like detergent and cleaning solutions would have to be washed out, I assume.
Yeah.
So, I mean, are you, is the plan to go ahead with an educational campaign and telling everybody that you really got to try to do this, or have you already done that?
So again, we need, you know, we need to amend and modify, but the plan is, I mean, it's something that I think we can all agree that needs to happen. I mean, there is no market for some of the material that's on there, we need to do the right thing and, and get that changed, no matter if we get a price change or not, I mean, that needs to happen, and that's one of, why it's a separate item.
Okay.
Because I think it's important that we make that change and get the education out there.
Is there a, a recent history of UTC adjustments related to especially the Chinese rejection of recyclables, and, and what's the magnitude of those benefits there has been?
So there, you, with the UTC, we go in annually and, and look at the market, and so it fluctuates annually already. And this last one was, I think it was $2.58, was the market adjustment? Yeah. Due to the China national?
Do, you know, your competitors, other, other companies have had similar experience with the UTC?
Yeah. Yeah. It's pretty much statewide, I mean, the state of Washington, outside of city contracts and municipal contracts, is, is UTC, so they've all had adjustments due to that.
Was this a WRA initiative to, before the UTC?
No, it's, it's just something that's really in the model of the UTC, of trying to make the rate fair for the consumer as well as the company, so that things don't get out of line and out of whack, and the company doesn't profit too much, and, you know, the customer doesn't, and the company doesn't fail as well. So it's protection for both, which is nice.
Thanks. Thanks. Any other questions?
That's it, thank you.
Well, the issue isn't going away, I'd like to thank you for coming.
Absolutely.
We're, we're, we're a tough crowd, but we're, we're appreciative of our relationship with LeMay and now Waste Connections, and, and it's been a healthy one for both sides, I believe.
Yeah.
Want to try to keep it that way.
Well, thank you all for your time.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. We now move to a 2019 state legislative session update. For this, we have Ms. Brianna Murray and Shelley, Shelley Helder of Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Affairs, who are bringing us bags of money. It's helpful for cookies or something.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Brianna Murray, and joined with Shelley Helder, we're from Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Affairs, your advocates down in Olympia. We just completed a grueling 105-day-long session. We are still sleep deprived and in recovery, but we did want to come here this evening and provide you with a report. You have in your council packets a comprehensive written report, so our hope with our presentation this evening is to hit on the high points for you and answer any questions that you may have. I'm going to first turn it over to Shelley to provide a broad, high-level session overview and an overview of the budgets, and then we'll dive into the legislative priorities.
Okay, so as Brianna said, this was the first year of the two-year legislative cycle. This was the long session, 105 days, and the legislature did adjourn on time at midnight on the 105th day. The primary objective of the session this year was to adopt biannual operating capital and transportation budgets, which they did. And in addition to adopting those budgets, they considered many pieces of legislation, over 2,000 were introduced, 481 passed the legislature, which is roughly a 22% passage rate, slightly higher than the historical passage rate. Both House and the Senate were controlled by Democrats this year, with stronger majorities than they've had in recent history. With those stronger majorities, they had an ambitious agenda and accomplished many of the items that they set out to do, including passing a 100% clean energy bill, as well as many others that I'm sure you have seen in the news, but they're not directly relevant to the city, so we won't be covering those this evening. Moving on to high-level summary of the operating budget. In March, the economic revenue forecast was released, and it projected an increased revenue of roughly $550 million. So that's additional money that the operating budget writers were able to take into account. In addition to that increased revenue projection, they also made several changes to existing tax laws and generated an additional roughly $850 million of tax revenue. The 2019-21 operating budget is roughly $52.4 billion, an increase of about 20% beyond the previous biennial budget. On this slide, and also in the written report, goes into much greater detail about those tax changes. So for purposes of our time this evening, I will just say that they are in the report, we're going to stay focused on the city's legislative priorities with the time, the limited time we have with you this evening.
You use the term tax changes a few times now. Were there any of them down? I'm not aware of any.
The, there were. Is the short answer to your question, but when you compare the ones that were a tax decrease with the others, overall, it was a significant increase. But there were some proposals, I don't know that they're the ones listed up there, but there were some minor proposals that resulted in tax decrease. The, the, so the graduated real estate excise tax, depending on the, the value of your property, that did go down for some individuals.
Yeah. Just a quick question on the, the revenue side. On the 30,000 overview, what were the sources, how it broke down with regard to the additional $550 million? Was it mostly sales tax to the state, or was it a lot of real estate transactions? What did they attribute in terms of economic activity? What was driving the increase in, in revenue to the state predominantly?
That's a great question. I do not know the breakdown.
I look at most of those reports.
Yeah.
Except some smaller taxes here and there.
It would be kind of interesting to know.
Sales taxes.
Right.
The O's doing grade.
The one I hear is always flat, is the marijuana tax revenues.
Marijuana started to flatten out, I don't know like gambling.
Yeah, it'd just be interesting to kind of know. Obviously, being O tax wasn't high enough for them, because they wanted to raise it.
They're just trying to get the state to certify the state.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, let's transition to your legislative priorities. At the end of 2018, or, or in the fall of 2018, you all adopted your 2019-20 legislative priorities. We recommend, and you have always followed our recommendation of adopting a two-year legislative agenda. The two-year legislative agenda that you adopted this last year included five items. I'm going to say we accomplished two and a half of those this year, and we're going to go through each one of them in detail. And I guess as we go through these, one item to think about is that the next step in our collaborative work together would be to revise your two-year legislative agenda and begin preparing for the 2020 legislative session, which is a short session and not a budget year. I will note, before we dive into the specific priorities, that we also had two new members of the legislative delegations who would have a, a learning curve. Each member of the delegation really did step up in one way or another on your legislative priorities, encouraged you to express thanks to each and every one of them. So I think with that, we're going to dive into each of these priorities and talk about how I came up with two and a half, and I think that half is probably the first one, community policing. Yes, so the city's legislative, one of the legislative priorities for this year was an increase in the funding for the community policing program at Western State Hospital. In the last biennial budget, the state included $621,000 for the city to administer that program, and the request was for a 3% annual increase, which would have meant roughly $650,000 throughout the course of the next biennium. As we do with the majority of the legislative priorities, is we begin working on these over the interim leading up to the session. And so we worked with DSHS over last interim in order to have this request increase be in their agency budget request, which it, it was. Because that requested increase was in their agency budget request, it was then included in the budget, the governor's budget proposal. So going into the legislative session, we were in really good position, already having been included in the governor's budget at that higher level. When the session began, we worked with the delegations to submit formal requests to the operating budget writers in both the House and the Senate. When the House budget was released, unfortunately, that increased funding was not included, so we were funded at the $621,000 level, but not the requested increase of 650. The increase was included, however, in the Senate operating budget proposal, and so between the time when the budgets were released and when the final budget was made public, we worked particularly with Representatives Kilduff and Levitt to follow up with House operating budget writers, to make sure that they were aware that that Senate level was the level that we would like to see in the final budget. And unfortunately, when the final budget was released, we were back at that kind of maintenance level of $621,000.
So we don't know the exact reason why the, the budget writers decided not to include the increase in the final budget, and we intend, as part of our interim activities, to dive into that a little bit deeper and have some more direct conversations with the budget writers that aren't, aren't really possible in the final 48 hours of session, once we've seen the final budget document. One thing we've observed is that the budget did include $896,000 for 5.4 security guards and $954,000 for five safety trainings at Western State Hospital. We also observed the legislature have a fairly robust discussion about what they expect the future of Western State Hospital to be, and your written report includes a list of the capital funding allocations they made for the improvements and changes to Western State Hospital. It's possible, although we don't know really one way or another, that the increase, or the lack of increase included in the budget could have been linked to some of the other dialogue around Western State Hospital. Moving forward, I think, as I mentioned, we're committed to following up with those budget writers and engaging in the dialogue with them about their, their vision and future of Western State Hospital, and how we see the community policing program fitting in with that future. So this was the, the half, because we got our money reauthorized, but it didn't get that, that cost bump. And I think it is important to note that it is a success that the funding was authorized, because each year we do have to go in and ask for that reauthorization, and so each year we should acknowledge that it's a success that they chose to allocate the funds once again this biennium.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, in past legislative sessions, we had had some thought about Eastern State Hospital looking to create a similar program for the agencies that Hospital looking to create a similar program for the agencies that support them with security being able to go and do that. And we weren't successful in getting a permanent piece to be able to go and do that. Did we abandon the strategy to try to get a permanent allocation as opposed to the every biennium allocation this time? I know we didn't get that, but was that because we didn't try this year?
Yeah, so we pursued permanent authorization the last two legislative sessions, and with the change in politics in Olympia, we really didn't see a path forward for a piece of legislation that would permanently authorize the program. We heard pretty strongly from budget writers, particularly out of the Democrat Party, that they wanted to retain the control to evaluate and choose whether or not to reauthorize the program year after year. So we did not bring forward the request to make it a permanent funding. However, I think if we were to have, we would not have been successful, based on the feedback we received. Regarding Eastern State Hospital, Shelley, if you want to speak to the details, that was one of the byproducts of our effort in seeking permanent authorization, is it allowed Eastern State Hospital to kind of shed light on the fact that they did not have a community policing program. In the 2017-19 biennium, they did secure funding for a community policing program, and the funding that they secured last biennium was reauthorized at the same level as last year, just the way ours was. And I think, is that...
I think you covered it.
Okay. Shelley, move.
So, is this, you mentioned before that we need to adjust our legislative agenda for the short session coming up. Is it your thought that this is something that's not in it for the next year and reappears a year after that?
Well, we certainly want to get more feedback from budget writers before providing you with some, any particularly strong guidance in one way or another. But I do think that you all, as a council, have some options before you. This, the 2020 session will be an off-budget year. However, they will make amendments to the budget that they already adopted. So one option would be that you can request that they amend their budget to add in the increase that wasn't included in the final budget. Now, that is a recommendation that I would recommend if we hear back from budget writers. Oh, no, we intended to give you the increase, we're not sure what happened there, and we'll fix it for you. If they instead kind of indicate, no, we intentionally didn't give you the increase, and we want to see how the changes play out at Western State Hospital, we want to see what happens based on these other investments, then we're probably in a better position to wait and work with them over 2020 at an agency level, and then come into the 21-23 biennium asking for a renewal of the funds and adjustment in the revenue amount. So those are some options that are likely before you, and that we are looking forward to digging in and getting more details to provide you with a more solid recommendation.
I know one of our challenges is getting all the data we would like to have out of DSHS about the internal workings at Western State. But, you know, one of the things that I intend to ask our police chief as this program goes on, is to somehow try to predict the impact if Western State significantly changes its percentage of civil commitments and forensic commitments. Is that expected to have a community policing workload impact? And while that... And my understanding is, is that they are, within this current, next coming biennium, going to start the process of making that, that change of reducing the percentage of civil commitments and increasing the number of forensic patients. And we've just never looked at the community policing workload divided between those two groups. And if there is something significant there that's gonna move in one direction or the other, you know, that may be something that we would know going into the next session that we could put in front of someone as data.
Yeah, I think that's all part of the dialogue.
Yep. Okay, so moving on, the next item on your legislative agenda was passage of military benefit zone legislation. This was the second legislative session that we were working on this particular bill. We, because this was the new year in the legislative biennium, we did have to introduce new legislation. And again, over the interim, we worked on this particular issue. We, in particular, worked with Representative Kilduff and staff at the House level to draft legislation, to broaden the bill from its version that we had last year where it was narrowly drafted to apply only to JBLM communities, and then also to expand it from being only sales tax to taking into account property tax. And so both of those items were things that we did in advance of session. We also worked to have this item presented before the Joint Committee on Veterans and Military Affairs, which is only an interim working group that considers items that are unique to military communities. And so, leaning up to session, we had already laid a good groundwork for this bill. We also worked with the communities that would now be included, so the communities around Naval Base, Kitsap, Naval Station Everett, Wouldbe Island, Fairchild, and their corresponding delegations. Because that was, one of the ideas behind expanding the bill was to generate increased legislative support. When it came time to find prime sponsors, Representative Kilduff was, again, ready to, at the table. Senator O'Ban had sponsored the bill for us in the previous year, and he was more than willing to do so again, but at his recommendation. He thought that it would be good if we had a Democrat sponsor prime it in the Senate. And so we worked with Senator Emily Randall from Bremerton to educate her on the issue and to help her understand the potential impacts to her community. And she quickly saw how this would be great for her community and was eager to advance the bill. Both bills had public hearings in their committees, the policy committees. And in the House, we had a little bit of a challenging hearing. There was some misunderstanding amongst members on the House committee. They're very new legislators, and it's a complex concept. And so, there was some confusion as a result of that hearing, and so we did follow up with each member of that committee. And ultimately, that we, that the bill passed out of that committee unanimously. So there was not a lack of support for the concept. However, both bills did end up dying once they reached their fiscal committees in both chambers. And so, there were several other bills that were proposed this session that were, the financing mechanism was a credit against the state sales tax. This was one of the bills out there that used that financing mechanism. And very few of those bills advanced, despite us being able to demonstrate the potential return on impact for the state, or return on investment for the state. They weren't really, we're not willing to consider the impact on the budget, at least this year.
What was the impact? What was our projected impact had this passed?
So in terms, the bill was capped at $5 million, so it would not have been greater than $5 million, yeah. But it would have been each biennium, so $5 million for the next 25 years.
And right across the state?
Across military communities in the state.
And was there any, any projection of the fiscal benefit over the long term that was presented to these committee members?
So that's one of the challenging things about the way the state does fiscal notes, is they take into account what the impact is on the budget in the near term.
Right.
They, the fiscal note that the state generates does not take into account the return on that investment. And so that's one thing that we really emphasized when we did have a public hearing in front of the House Finance Committee, is the potential benefit to the state. And I think the hearing was, was very powerful in that regard. But again, it just didn't get over that hurdle.
Do we have any, do we have any method going forward for validating that, working with other communities? Like, we had, South Sound Military Communities Partnership did a study of the economic impact of JBLM through the University of Washington Tacoma Center for Business Analytics. And so you put the big purple W on the top, you say some professor and master students did it, and it's a lot different than a city walking in and saying, we know this will work.
So one of the pieces of data that we've utilized, as well as what AWC utilized in advancing another bill, is there, in the early to, early to mid 2000s, there was a whole round of these types of programs authorized. And the jurisdictions that were awarded the funds at that time have now been in place for a decade. And so they have a decade's worth of data that shows the return on investments from those previous increment financing programs. And so that data is fairly, I mean, is fairly accurate. It's not necessarily consistent from city to city, but it is, it does demonstrate the return on investment, and it's produced by their own state agencies, which makes them inclined to utilize it more. I think for this particular legislative priority, the goal is to provide the City of Lakewood with an increment financing tool that allows the city to increase economic fatality and quality of life within the community. We can do that through continuing to try and push on the military benefit zone, or the Association of Washington Cities had a business ecosystems bill that provided a very similar tool. Both the military benefit zone bill and the business ecosystems bill died in the fiscal committee. For both bills, we heard from multiple legislators, well, both bills were advanced out of the policy committee unanimously, and we heard from members on the fiscal committees that they were very intrigued by the idea, that they liked the idea. I think one of the reasons neither bill got across the finish line this year is because we had a very new legislature, with a lot of new members that weren't familiar with these programs when they were authorized in the early to mid 2000s, and they really hadn't been briefed on it when we'd brought the bill forward in previous sessions. So I, I think as we move forward, if our goal remains, how do we get Lakewood an increment financing tool, we need to strategize around, is it a military benefit zone? Is it the business ecosystems bill? Our thought initially this last year was that, let's advance both of them and let them build momentum that they can build off of each other, and eventually, maybe they get combined into one. Especially because the business ecosystems bill was only considered in the Senate, it was not considered in the House. I think we want to reevaluate that, now that we've given an initial briefing, an initial run at it with this particular legislature. Work with AWC over the interim and come back strong next session to look at a way to get some kind of an increment financing tool across the finish line.
Maybe if there can be an education piece for the newer legislators. This really, although it has a fiscal note, it's not about spending money, it's about investing money to grow the pot. That can be driven home a little bit more thoroughly.
Yeah, I think one of the, just a timing thing that works to our benefit between now and 2020 is the legislature, the 2019 legislature really came into office in November, or was elected in November and didn't come into office until January. And that's a very sort of short and frantic period of time, including all the holiday time, leading into the session, which is then also a very fast-paced environment on which to quickly learn complex issues. I think what we have to our benefit between now and January of 2020 is many months with now exactly who we know is going to be in office, exactly who we know is gonna be serving on what committee, in what chairmanship position, and can spend a lot of time, not only doing the briefing that you're talking about in maybe a more formal setting, but also a lot of one-on-one time. And doing that in collaboration with other communities and with the association, I think, is a helpful way of trying to get something across.
Okay, moving on, the next item on your legislative agenda was a capital budget request. And this is really a request that is continuing to build on the many investments that you have requested from the state at Fort Silicon Park and part of the Fort Silicon Park Master Plan. So we requested $1 million to do for, conversion of four dirt infills at Fort Silicon Park. And in the House, it was supported by both Representative Kilduff and Representative Levitt, but ultimately, one member submits the request. And so Representative Levitt submitted the request for this particular project, and Senator O'Ban submitted it in the Senate. We were successful in securing money in the final budget, and there is a typo on the screen, it's 1.015, not 1.105. It's correct in the written report. But the reason that that amount is slightly larger than the $1 million that we requested is because Department of Commerce collects a 3% administrative fee. In the past, we have not included that 3% fee in the total amount that we've requested of the legislature, and as a result, the city's just kind of absorbed that into the amount that you've ended up receiving. This year, we decided to incorporate that into our request, and so the total amount up there covers a portion of that 3% administrative fee. So you guys are gonna be walking away with more than you would have had that amount not been included. And the next item is also a capital budget request. This, the previous was in the 28th, this request is in the 29th. City of Lakewood is very fortunate to cover two legislative districts, and so as a result, have an opportunity to work with two different legislative delegations to request funding from the capital budget. Capital budget writers are pretty strict about legislators prioritizing their requests. And so, for delegations that have many cities within their district, it's difficult for them to then prioritize their requests when they have several coming forward. So for the city to receive two within the same year is a big deal. Again, this request was for $750,000 for additional improvements at Springbrook Park. And I say additional because a couple years ago, there was the Phase 1 of the improvements at Springbrook Park. And so, because there are still two members of the 29th delegation that are representing the city, they are familiar with this park and really like it, and are excited to continue partnering with you all, making investments there. So really was a great project for them to be able to throw their support behind. And again, the final amount was the $773,000 because that includes the 3% fee that Department of Commerce will then be taking off the top.
Could Representative Morgan support that as well?
Yes, yeah, this was supported by the entire delegation, both requests were, yeah. In addition to the amounts that were received for direct appropriations through the capital budget process, the city's Parks Department had previously applied for and competed through the Washington Wildlife Recreation Program, as well as the Aquatic Lands Enhancement Account. So as a result of both of those grant programs being funded at the levels that were requested, the city will receive $500,000 for Harry Todd Waterfront Park through the ALIA Grant Program, and $500,000 for Fort Silicon Park Trail Access upgrades. In addition, slightly unrelated, but also through the capital budget, SSMCP received $500,000 for the North Clear Zone. So that money would be coming through the city as the fiduciary agent. In total, through the capital budget, City of Lakewood received $2.788 million in the biennial budget, not including the North Clear Zone funding.
Pretty good.
And then the last item on the legislative agenda for this year was the request for $500,000 to complete an Amtrak station assessment. This year, to complete the request this year, what was a little bit unique is that the Chair of both the House and the Senate Transportation Committees requested projects. They said, we know that there is a lot of transportation needs out there, please submit your requests. Oh, and by the way, we don't have any money, but tell us what you want. So we worked with the delegation, all six members of the delegation submitted and supported the request to do the Amtrak station assessment, as well as many letters of support that were submitted by, collected and then submitted by the city. So unfortunately, when the final budgets were released, there was no funding included in either the House or the Senate transportation budget. And I will note that the Senate transportation budget did not include funding for any new projects. There was, the Senate Transportation Chair was very adamant that there is no new money in transportation, and therefore, there should be no new projects. Ultimately, the final transportation budget had a compromise of a very limited amount of funding in new projects.
I think the other... I think the other component that, that weighed in here was that because the transportation revenue that is available is so limited, and it will be for quite some time, because when the legislature adopted the 2015 gas tax increase, they really planned out how they wanted to spend that money over 16 years without leaving much wiggle room from year to year. So because it's so extremely limited, what we're seeing is projects have to be sort of in the queue or in line for a number of years before they're then finally able to take advantage of the limited funding that is available. And there are other communities within the 28th and 29th legislative districts that have been asking for transportation funding and haven't been getting them. You all have been getting the money, but they have not. So this year, it very well could have been just somebody else's turn. I think the other thing to keep in mind is that we saw the legislature begin discussing their next transportation revenue package this year. We saw a formal proposal introduced and advanced out of committee that would have increased revenue for transportation moving forward, particularly when we look at Initiative 976 on this November's ballot. And whether or not that passes, we could see that conversation really increase and be taken much more seriously as we move into the 2020 legislative session. So that would impact future funding availability.
Was it 3.9 million for the Silicon Dupont Road, just capital budget money?
That was transportation money.
It was transportation money.
Yes.
But that's a new project.
That was a project, kind of as Brianna alluded to, that had been in the queue for a couple of years. Okay.
Mr. Branson.
Regarding the infill station assessment request. Was it weaker because it was the city requesting it as opposed to perhaps SMMCP as a regional both effect benefit to the installation as well as the number of municipalities that would be within the commuting distance of such a station? And did any members of the legislature have any reluctance about this because the, after the accident in 2017, Amtrak hasn't started running on this line yet? So is that a factor for when the timing is that this is actually going to be able to actually get some traction?
Yeah, I think that's a good question. I didn't get the sense that there was any issue with the requesting entity or the fact that the rail line hasn't started running yet. I think it really did come down to that it was, folks thought it was a great, a great idea to do this assessment and a great idea to increase the accessibility of passenger rail. There just wasn't the funding available to do it in this budget. So in addition to your legislative agenda, you also adopt a rather comprehensive policy manual. And so I just wanted to highlight a few bills that came into play this session that impacted statements in your policy manual. On the screen, you see several bills. Those in bold are bills that passed the legislature this session. I do want to highlight one in particular, the Minimum Density Bill, House Bill 1923. This is a bill that went through many, many iterations. And both Brianna and I were not able to do our job fully without the support of city staff, and in particular, Dave Buer, who provided very thorough and timely feedback on ideas that were being proposed. And it's one thing for Brianna and I to say, hey, this legislator, this is a bad idea. It's another thing when a city planner is able to come forward and say, these are the implications and this is what this, this could do if we were to pass this. And so I just want to, you know, recognize that Dave devoted a lot of time in order for us to be able to advocate and represent local control on your behalf. And then the third item on that list there, the Defense Communities Infrastructure Program. This is a bill that was a priority for the Southside Military Communities Partnership. This was the second year that they were working on that bill and the governor just signed it into law this afternoon. So a big success for SSMCP.
What's that going to do effectively?
Yeah, so the bill basically creates an account within the capital budget to allow military communities to compete for funding. The program is kind of mirrored after a federal program where there's, the federal program requires a 20% state match. So this is setting up the framework for the state to solicit projects from military communities, prioritize those projects. And then in the coming years, we're hoping to fill, fill up that bucket. So it's established, we need to put money into it.
Not only does it have the same name and acronym, it is authorized but unfunded, just like the federal.
That's correct, yep. It's the first step of the process. I'm sorry.
Is the plan not to do until the next biennial, maybe?
Well, that's one of the items that SSMCP will be talking about when we have a discussion like this with, with that group. And again, this is just a continuation of a number of issues that we worked on as a result of items and positions listed in your policy manual. I will call your attention to the fourth bullet point, Adult Family Homes Legislation. This was the second year that we saw this bill, House Bill 1023, authorizing certain adult family homes to increase capacity from six beds to eight beds. This bill sailed through the House, passed unanimously. When it got over to the Senate, Senator O'Ban sponsored a couple amendments that I think definitely spoke to a lot of the concerns that the city has regarding this bill. Those amendments were adopted and incorporated into the bill and then it passed the Senate unanimously. Because the bill was amended in the Senate, it had to go back to the House for concurrence. And ultimately, the House did not concur with those Senate amendments. And so the bill died. I do think that this is a bill that we will see return next year because it's made its way through the process already and many people are familiar with it. There was relatively limited opposition this year. I do think it's something that will likely pass next year.
Since affordable housing is such an issue and the most affordable ownership is generally condos, could you give us a brief overview of which liability reform proposals were accepted into that bill?
Yeah, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I can try. So there's a very detailed description of the bill in your written report. The condo liability reform bill that was passed, Senate Bill 5334, is the bill that all of the stakeholders worked on leading up to the legislative session. And where all the amendments that were made during the legislative session were agreed to by the stakeholders. So there were a few other bills around condo liability that were introduced. The one that passed is the big stakeholder bill. In terms of what it actually does, it changed the warranty requirements that need to be met when there's a defect. And so, for example, if there is a defect, they have to demonstrate that it can't be easily fixed and that there's specific damages, that it's not aesthetic, things along those lines. It also contained a provision that held harmless the board members for any sort of resulting condo, condo liability. And that's probably the best I can do off the top of my head on the specifics, but I encourage you to read the full summary and reports and we're happy to follow up with, with questions or with, with any questions you might have.
Did the proponents think it was enough? Or are we just kind of just, did we just do a half measure that really isn't going to help?
My impression is that everyone was pleased with, with the version that passed. And if you hear otherwise, please let us know because that's certainly the impression that was provided to all the stakeholders in the broader group. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Just, yeah, we just want to end by saying thank you so much for being a great partner as a city. I, I, you know, Shelley mentioned Dave Buer, but also Shannon, Mary, Heidi, Kim, Eileen, Chief Zaro, and of course, your city manager, all did great work in getting us the information that we need to be successful advocates on your behalf. Your legislative delegation, all of them did a great job and really embraced various components of the legislative priorities that spoke to them and advocated on behalf of the city. We also appreciate the trips to Olympia in order to testify and meet with legislators. I just can't emphasize enough that in order to accomplish as much as, as the city did on your legislative priorities, it really is a partnership and we greatly appreciate it.
Well, we appreciate your efforts and I, I think I'm safe in saying that Mary Dodsworth will continue to be a very enthusiastic assistant in your efforts as long as you keep bringing her those wheelbarrow loads of money like you did this. So there with her Cheshire Cat grin. Anything further? Well, thank you very much. Oh, Ms. Moss.
Thank you guys for advocating for us. You did a great job and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
A pleasure.
So we move on to Legacy Plan Update with Ms. Kelly Fong.
I'm joined here tonight by Parks and Recreation and Community Service Director Mary Dodsworth. And we're here to provide an update on the update to the city's master park and recreation plan, also known as the Legacy Plan. Since its approval in 2014, the Legacy Plan has served as the strategic plan for building healthy and sustainable parks and recreation systems here in Lakewood. It has helped inform and shape policies and procedures as well as programs and services. And it's been instrumental in supporting grant applications. So why the update now? One of the reasons is to remain timely. The other reason is to be responsive to community needs. This allows the city to go back and take the pulse of the community. And the third reason is also to remain competitive for grant funding. For the city to remain eligible for Washington Recreation and Conservation Office grants, it has to be updated every six years. So in order to meet this requirement, the city intends on updating the master plan by 2020. Some of the areas that the city will be looking into to update are the community profile section, the goals and objectives, the classifications of parks and their existing inventory, doing a deep dive into public involvement and public engagement, also looking at what's going on nationally, regionally, and then using our public involvement to help with local trends, taking a look at our capital improvement plan for the parks and doing an assessment of our parks as far as needs and levels of service. Like I mentioned, public involvement is going to be a huge part of this process and this is supported by the city's strategic plan, as you can see here in Goal Strategy 5.4. It's also supported by the Legacy Plan in Goal Nine and Goal 10. So some things that the city is going to do as part of this updating process is, number one, starting a Legacy Plan Task Force. This has already occurred. The Legacy Plan Task Force is, consists of city personnel, local stakeholders, community members. We have members from the Parks and Recreation Board, Advisory Board, the Arts Commission, and as well as from the Senior Center. And the plan is to meet once a month, the first Thursday of every month from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. And the goal of this group is to help provide guidance on the plan. So they'll be reviewing a lot of the documentation and work that the city does as well as our outreach and engagement information that we gather. Items that the Legacy Plan Task Force has covered thus far includes an overview of the schedule, which is attached in your memo as Table A and Table B, I believe on page 29 and 30. And you can take a look at that. The first one just provides a general overview and the second one provides a more detailed overview. I will say as a caveat that it is subject to change as we move along in this process. We've also covered demographics. So in our last meeting, we took a look at 2000 census data, 2010 census data, and then 2017 American survey estimates. And then we performed a review of a survey that'll be talked about here just in a second in more detail. And we're continuing to work on the questions for those surveys. So for the surveys, the idea would be that the city would have two surveys. One would be online and this would be accessible to everyone and anyone. So we would make sure to post it on our social media, post it on our website, have it in the Connections Magazine, and do email blasts to known parks and recreation users. The second survey would be more controlled and the idea would be that we would randomly select 2,000 households here in Lakewood and send out a mailing saying that they've been randomly, randomly selected for this survey. And they would be given an access code to take the survey online. So what you're seeing here on this slide is a random selection of households here in Lakewood. And you can see it broken down by police districts. And just to kind of give you a better look into these randomly selected households, on the left-hand side, you have all of Lakewood. So this is all residential units. And it's broken down by your police districts again and by types of dwelling units in each of those districts. On the right-hand side, you have our random sample. So these are those 2,000 households that were selected again by type and police districts. And what you can see from these two graphs is that the random sample selection is fairly reflective of Lakewood as a whole. The next slide here shows you the random sample again, and this is just the type of household selected. So out of all of the police districts, compiling that, and you can see that the highest selected was single-family residence, followed closely by apartment complexes. In addition to doing the Legacy Plan Task Force and the online survey and the controlled survey, the city is also going to do three open houses. Two will be here at City Hall and we're looking to do one off-site, potentially at the Lakewood Library. We'll also have a webpage dedicated to the update, which will provide real-time data and information on, say, our open houses and other engagement activities that are occurring. Currently, if you tried to click on the link provided in the memo, it doesn't work. It's in draft form, but is hopefully going to be live here in the next couple of days. In addition to this, we're also going to try to host a online public forum. So it shouldn't say forum, it should say forum. My bad. And there could be a forum on the forum. But the idea would really just be to replicate the open house process for people to visit online and still be able to provide similar feedback to the city. In addition to all of this, we're also looking to do some targeted outreach, which would include focus groups. So these would be interviews with groups like yourself, as well as neighborhood associations, recreation groups, sports groups, environmental groups, and with city staff. And pop-up events, which were very successful with the downtown plan, we're looking to schedule some of those. So this would be where the city would go out into the community during a regular scheduled or special community event and have a tent and try to get feedback in that way. And so some of the ideas that we have so far are to have a tent at Summerfest, one of the farmer's markets, and the Senior Center Activity Open House. And we're still collecting more, so we expect to have a few more pop-up events throughout the community. So this really wraps up my presentation. I will take any questions from the city council.
Mr. Simpson.
This is well done. This is a good, good plan. I just have one question. You have two surveys, which mirror one another. Aren't you making more work for yourself, just go with one rather than the other?
So the, the purpose behind the two surveys is one to have one that's a little bit more controlled. And then the second one would be to allow for anyone to access it. And I get what you're saying about doing more work, but luckily in this day and age, the, the software will do more work than I will.
Just to follow up, one of the things that we did last time was to do two surveys like that. One was so when we're doing community outreach presentations to service One was so when we're doing community outreach presentations to service clubs, condo groups, church groups, whichever, you had a tool that you could get feedback from folks.
Can you break that down just the way you described it?
Sure.
Then you've got it. You answered the question.
And also it kind of helps us, it also helps us test the assumptions and the outcome to see, is it, and most of the time you find out even though one is controlled and one is random, you get similar kinds of information. But it's, if you get anything that's really different, then it tells us we need to do a bit more research.
I understand. I thought the answer was going to be one's a control group and the other isn't, but you didn't say that. Mary, surprise.
We're a good team.
Yeah.
Other questions? Thanks for the update. Looks good. So we move to a review of fiscal agent agreement with Lakewood's Choice. Mr. Humphreys.
I just do it all. Another great team. The silent partner. You all know me, but I'd really like to introduce you to our new human services coordinator. This is Brian Humphreys and he's just been with the city for several months, but we're excited to have him here. He's got a great background. He's already jumped into our very collaborative community processes and so he's going to share with you some information on Lakewood's Choice and an opportunity that the city has to be the fiscal agent for their current contract.
Mayor, Council, thank you for the time this evening. We'll briefly talk about it and then answer any questions you guys might have. So let's dive in. What is Lakewood's Choice? It is, has a big vision for a drug-free, healthy, resilient community, but at its core, it is a youth substance abuse prevention initiative that offers curricula for parents and youth and social activities to build community. It has been working in Lakewood for four years, entering its fifth year. Started out at, where it's always been an independent initiative, but it started out working out of Centerforce and then Springbrook Connections and partnering with them closely. For the last couple of years, it's been branching out and serving the whole city and it basically works out of Barnes &amp; Noble at this point. What does Lakewood's Choice do? It offers two meetings every month, one for the leadership team and one for the coalition of partners. Basically, anybody in the community that wants to be a part of the coalition tends to be organizational partners. This is the current makeup of the leadership team and the real incentive for this contract, probably more than the work itself, is actually the partners doing the work. As you can see, these are organizations we already partner with, these are organizations that we fund, and in the case of the police department, it's us. So we would be involved in this initiative kind of regardless of the possibility of the contract. That's more the case when you look at the list of partners that are most engaged with the initiative. This is a who's who of organizations doing excellent work in our community. And just on this list alone, there are nine organizations that we currently directly fund or just recently have been funding. Lakewood's Choice offers parenting classes, different curricula for parents and youth of different ages. They offer, they have an on-call chemical dependency counselor for high-risk middle school youth. They do the Drug Take Back Day. They partner with our police department. They partner with Springbrook on the summer day camp and they offer block parties and sometimes community dinners for the community building part of this. The structure, the money originates with the State of Washington Healthcare Authority. Up until last July, it was with DSHS. So if you look at the contract template I gave you, that's why it says DSHS is the funder. The structure of the contract and the content of the contract are not changing. The staff has been ported over to HCA, so the same contract manager they had for four years is the same contract manager now. So we're going to get the new contract by the end of the month. Since we don't think it's going to be at all substantively different, I provided the template contract that we have. And we will, we're going to be the fiscal agent. If we were to take the contract, it starts July 1 of this year, we would be the fiscal agent, monitoring the contract, submitting the monthly reports and overseeing the work. We would hire the two independent contractors that have been doing the work for the past four years, just to, as independent contractors, just to keep on doing what they're doing. So why City Lakewood? First and foremost, because it aligns with the missions of the Lakewood's Promise Goals and the human services funding areas. But also because it, we are, we are not direct service providers, we are the conveners and the facilitators. Whenever there's potential overlap in the community, we are there to make sure everybody is collaborating and not competing, make sure everyone's playing in the sand together well. And since there is so much overlap between Lakewood's Choice and the Promise Goals, the same funders that we fund to work with youth are also working with youth through Lakewood's Choice, we would already be here encouraging collaboration and alignment. And so the real benefit of this contract is it provides funding for us to do what we were already going to be doing. So in that respect, it's actually a pretty kind of classic win-win for us.
My question when I looked at this is, well, it sounds good, but what's broken? So what's broken is we're doing work for nothing.
So what's...
And this skims, this has an administrative haircut off of it that comes to...
Yeah, so for the first four years, the county was the fiscal agent. And so that was the big question, why do they not want it anymore? So there's two reasons. So first of all, there's two reasons they're dropping it. So first, should I start off with that? So first of all, the county cannot easily hire independent contractors. So they subcontracted with Tacoma Community House, who then hired the contractors. Well, TCH had to take their admin bite out of the apple and then that diluted the budget, which was never a great solution anyway. And second of all, the county is a direct service provider as much as they are a funder. They took a much more hands-on approach. So they took on four of these contracts throughout the county and they bundled the admin dollars to hire a full-time staff person. There's not enough money in four of these contracts in the admin budget to sustain a full-time person and they're not interested in being just a fiscal agent, so they are letting go of the contract. We, on the other hand, are not direct service providers. We are the conveners and facilitators. It's just as much money as we need to be the fiscal agent, so it's an appropriate amount for us. So we would...
They might know who they are.
So we would be the fiscal agent. We would, the contract is $110,000 a year for two years. I think I made a typo and your sum rate is $100,000. It is $110,000 per year for two years. We would be submitting the reports, although they'd be prepared by the two contractors and doing the monthly billing, we would provide the oversight and with the two staff, which basically for means, for me means probably bi-weekly check-in meetings, and then provide whatever communication and technical support they needed. There's the snapshot of the budget and this is standardized by the state. The admin portion, which would be available to the city, is $8,906, 8% of the contract locked in by the state. That is why you can't do anything more than be the fiscal agent. We consider the potential risks and downsides of this contract and there are three main ones. So first of all, we don't want to be direct service providers. Does this contract push us in that direction? That is why the independent contractor status was important for us to maintain because we can't legally tell them how or when to do the work. We just ensure that we are complying with the contract and monitoring the work, which is what human services does already. The other one was, what if the contractors don't meet the contract deliverables? That's always a little bit of a risk with any contract, but we're going to hire the same contractors that have been doing the work for four years. They know what they're doing. A big incentive for us in considering this contract was actually meeting with the two staff members, who are excellent. They are on top of this project, they know the work, they've been doing it well for four years, the state loves them. We think this is a pretty low-risk opportunity. And then the third one is, what if that technical support and communication that the two staff members ends up exceeding the amount in the contract? That was the only concern that we kind of thought might be a realistic possibility. So we have been having ongoing meetings with those staff, especially since the county was more hands-on. Was that necessary or was that what the county wanted to do? So we've been meeting with them regularly and we are on the same page with them and we're pretty sure they're not going to need much from us and if they do, it's not going to be excessive. So that's pretty much it for me. We think this is a low-risk, low-maintenance contract that provides us funding to do what we were already going to do and gives us more influence to do so. So, taking questions.
Mr. Whelan.
I appreciate the information. I'm all about avoiding overlap. And as I'm listening to the proposal, I'm thinking about my community engagement leadership team meeting I'm going to this week, where much of the subject matter here is part and parcel to the community engagement that CELT is trying to do and this is just an aspect of it. So the question came up when we were at the last meeting is, as opposed to having them develop a 501(c)(3), I said, you know, there's got to be a better way. We can run those resources through the city or district or something. So maybe an issue that comes up, but I'd love to take some of this PowerPoint to the meeting and say, you know, obviously here's a mechanism already in place for some of the things you're doing. My question to you is, what has been the engagement of the school district with regard to this program? I see Holly Schaefer's on the leadership team. How much of an emphasis are they making for this because it's for their students in this district?
Well, CELT itself has still been in that sort of development stages. So I'm not quite sure what the interaction is, except for all the parties do get together and so they talk about specific things maybe related to choice, but they're also engaged in our youth summit, Springbrook programs, our summer day camp programs. So there's a lot of overlap from the choice conversations. I'm not that familiar with how they've engaged CELT.
I'm just focused a little bit on the district. What is the district's aim and use and participation in choice?
Oh, they've been very involved with choice because the programs are held at the school. There's a drug and alcohol counselor at the school, which is a requirement, I believe, of the grant. So that's an integration and also engagement tool. They, the school district staff are on, the leadership team and the coalition team, so there's, there's a constant interaction. They understand that's where the kids are. If they're going to be effective, they need to go to the kids as well as leading the programs. And then because of the parenting program element, they're working with young children to high school kids. So they've been very engaged with choice.
How have they been soliciting the parent involvement for this program through the district?
Gosh, they do a lot. Do you, are you familiar with the last round that they did?
Last round? It was ongoing, yeah.
Yeah, so they, they're engaged, they work with the Boys and Girls Club as well, so they're working with those parents that come to that site. They were at a school district for the elementary school kids where they would drop them off for E-cap or kindergarten and then they would do the program right there so the parents could just participate without having to go somewhere else and, and then, you know, wait 20 minutes after their class was done and they'd pick their children up. And then throughout the community, throughout the different networks with the counselors, getting those parents in that might need some additional support based on, you know, however they establish that. So working with Greater Lakes Mental Health and you saw all those partners there. You've got a couple of different healthcare folks. So all those folks are really working together to get the participants there that need it, whether it's a parent of a small child, a middle school child. And they really do a lot of follow-up afterwards, so they get these kids engaged, they give them resources, they give them that social network, which is so important. And then they give them the opportunity, kind of like we do with our youth council, is why don't you come back and help? Why don't you help at our block party? Why don't you maybe be a mentor for the next group of kids coming in, so?
No, we're not going to be doing much active participation as a fiscal agent, but can we at least get some data back to say, here's how many folks, kids and parents have been served?
Oh, 100%. All of those reports that are due or that are required by the state will have all that data.
Yeah, it'd be great to see.
Yeah.
And keep in mind, that conversation you're proposing is the same conversation I'm having with them about our community collaboration. So they're, they're going to grow their scope and engage all these communities and like, well, first evaluate who's already engaged in the community, come to our community coalition, which they have been doing, figure out what we're doing and if there are any gaps between us, let's fill them. And the contract actually gives us more influence to do that.
Perfect. Thank you.
And for instance, just from a, like you said, gap and overlap is that just when we're talking about the youth summit, so to speak, we had been working on that with the youth council since fall and then all of a sudden in January, you know, CELT comes forward, oh, we're going to do this youth summit. And we're like, well, why are you doing a youth summit? We're already doing this. And then Choice came forward and they said, we thought it'd be a great idea to do youth summit. We're like, why are you doing that? And so Choice joined us and they did one whole element, you know, one of the four sessions, which was fantastic, but they recognize, you know, three youth summits in one year, somebody's going to fail, probably two are going to fail. So why don't we all join together? And it just makes sense, you know, a bigger bang for your buck. You know, I love a two-for-one, three-for-one.
They're doing after-schools.
Who?
I mean, they came to the youth council, but not with you. Doing it with other youth summit, after-schools, I feel like it derives.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a couple of questions to sort of straighten things out in my perception. So Lakewood's Choice, it's the name of a program, is there a legal entity?
No, they're just, they're an initiative, not an entity.
So it's, it's just, it's the name of a program, not a, not, not an actual...
Yeah, I mean, I didn't want to get too much into the...
You don't have a bank account or anything like that.
No, no, none of that stuff. Now, Choice, Choice is the Lakewood manifestation of a statewide initiative called CPWI, which we don't need to get into, but it is a statewide thing that's based on, the Athena Forum is this nationwide thing, which the CPWI is a statewide thing and Lakewood's Choice is the local version. So we got all kinds of names and acronyms flying around, but, but they are just two independent contractors doing the work. So...
Who's accountable?
Mayfair?
Who's accountable?
Ultimately, we are if we own the contract.
To the...
So we, we are becoming Lakewood's Choice. Who tells them what to do?
I agree. I mean, as fiscal agent, fiscal agent, we're just a fiscal agent. We're not a sponsor of the program. We're not responsible for the program. I mean, this is not a nose on the... I mean, I think they would be stunned if we were sitting here saying, well, now that we have our nose in the campaign, what can we do with it?
Well, who's, who's "they" is what I'm wondering. You say it's not an entity, it's a movement. There has to be somebody who's responsible for the ongoing sustainment of this program.
Yeah, it's the state. The healthcare authority funds the program, yeah.
Well...
Washington State.
Well, who is it locally?
The Mayfair?
Who was the health department?
The health depart, well, no, Pierce County was the fiscal agent previously and then they subcontracted with Tacoma Community House, which really didn't align their missions well. So, so it makes more sense for us to be the fiscal agent because again, we're doing like work and so...
Who do they report to?
Who, Choice, reports to the...
Healthcare authority.
The healthcare authority through the state of Washington.
Who has been the driver for five years.
And previously it was housed in DSHS and now they've just moved it to a new...
To HCA.
Yeah.
You know, I, that arrangement is, sounds like the way you see it, okay? But there's a contract to be signed with the healthcare authority and it's going to be signed by the city.
Correct.
And the city is going to agree to do whatever it takes with this money to run the program according to the contract and to obtain the outcomes that are there and submit the billings and reports. So that ultimately, as your slide about risks stated, the risk of not meeting outcomes is a risk that the city essentially absorbs because the city is the one who is now committing to achieving the outcomes. I was a little bit confused by the terminology of higher independent contractors. Because, you know, I know contracting with independent contractors is, is, is the terminology that I'm used to.
It was just a misspelled.
You know, because hiring implies paying them a salary and benefits and things like that and I don't see any of that in the simplified budget here. So that the, that you and your colleague together essentially are going to do this work for two years, sharing $49,600 in income and then you have a budget of just over $50,000 to actually do things, travel, train and do those sorts of things. So what's, when, so when you're spending the $48,000 implementation, that's really a grant the city is receiving and all of those will process through our procurement pieces.
Right.
I mean, that basically, that will be, we'll be going through and doing that. And it doesn't seem like there's any, and I'll use the term salary, but it's not really right, there's not a, any increase built in for year two over year one, which would normally in most grants, if I've got staff, that, that would be, be a function that you would build into a multi-year... um, be a function, uh, uh, that, that you would build into a multi-year contract. Does the healthcare authority not allow that?
That basically, we are contracting with individuals, not hiring them, so we might have misspoke that, but you're correct. And the nine thousand dollars-ish, it basically covers four hours a week for us as a city to oversee the contract. So that's, that's where that resource comes in. Now, is there a little bit extra time when they're writing a check and doing some of those things? Yes, but the city's looking at covering that with our internal operations, so.
Okay, and, and so I see the, obviously our, our finance people have some workload in this. If, 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 if we're going to run purchases and things through them to be able to go and do that. I, um, um. For the, for the benefit that you provide the community, it seems we're paying you a ridiculously small sum, uh, that the contract is, 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 is funding that. So, uh, go through and do that, that, uh, but, but this, 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 this will be like, just like any other contract that the city has and we're just subcontracting with a couple of individuals to, to, to do it. But the healthcare authority, while they may operationally talk with you in terms of accountability, they're going to come to Mary.
Are you writing this?
No, 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 we're just man.
So here's.
I mean, I mean, who in the city is the operable person that's in contact with the healthcare authority?
Let's look at, look at page forty-eight of your presentation for a moment and.
We're just the, yeah.
I, I understand, I'm not concerned about the amount of money, the extra work that the city may do, the vi- the validity of the program, those, those things are kind of settled in my mind. I want to know who they is. And, and on page forty-eight, it says there's a leadership team. And it says responsible for overseeing the grant requirements. We're the fiscal agent. Who, this, are these contractors going to be responsible for that, to this group? Making financial decisions.
Yeah.
And governing decisions about the coalition's activities and strategies.
That's correct.
Do they have a buy, do they have bylaws? Who they vote? They're controlling the activities that we are responsible for fiscally. But they get to choose what happens to the money, they get to choose whether it's being complied with. They get to just choose the direction. Who is they? The people that show up that day? Is there a quorum? Is there some entity? This, this getting back to what we had Lakewood's promise outside, we couldn't give them money because they were a movement and they weren't an entity. Uh, it's, it's, we're, I think we're backsliding here, right? There has to, there has to be some sort of, if somebody's going to make decisions, they, they can't have authority without accountability and there's nothing here to have accountability.
Yeah, they don't have bylaws. This is the leadership team, these org, these individuals are the ones who make those decisions. But they don't have, they can't do whatever they want. There is a two-hundred-page document with a bunch of evidence-based curricula. They have to choose from that list.
Yeah, who's they?
The leadership team.
The one that shows up that day? Do they have bylaws? How they vote?
They don't have bylaws, no.
Okay, see, that's, that's the issue I have is you, they have authority, but they, there's no entity with accountability, except the city.
I mean, if the contractor's with, the healthcare authority with the city, it would seem that we'd have to take some, either at the city manager or someone would have to do something to appoint this leadership team. And to the, the level that the city is going to assume accountability, I'm not sure that, that a CSO is the senior city official involved in financial oversight and, and, and decisions. Is, you know, that's, because that's, because I kind of thought, based on the packet that I saw and the correspondence with Mary, that the healthcare authority was looking at Mary being essentially the the person that's here. I mean, certainly I don't know that this is a, that, that, um, somewhere within the city staff, there's got to be, uh, someone who's got oversight to make sure that the city is doing all of these things, like the billing and the reporting and, and, and being able to go and do that. You know, uh, yeah, that's just not something you just stick in the contract, have the contractor, you gotta, badly put themselves.
It's, the fiscal agent in my mind is you're paying the bills and your physicality bills. So our, our, our duty is to the state, whoever's giving the bills, we pay. That's the fiscal, fiscal agent is not controlled. Again, if they were here listening, just trying to figure out how to keep control of the program now, they, they would walk away, they should walk away. If that is not, governments are fiscal agents for all sorts of agencies. The county is fiscal agent for dozens and dozens of agencies around. School districts, the county doesn't run the school districts, they never have. The school districts don't go into these fiscal agent goals of the county, assuming that the county has some control of them. There, there's, there's simply, the, the, we're, we're running these programs to make sure our, but we do have work to do and the work is to make sure the bills are paid properly and that they're not expensive.
But, but my understanding of fiscal agents is you're the fiscal agent for another entity.
Correct.
And, and, and they, we just said that Lakewood's Choice is not an entity at all. It, it doesn't have, it, it's not an organization, it's not a five hundred thirty-three, it, it's.
It's not even an incorporated association.
It's a, it's a program of the healthcare authority. So we are entering into a contract with the healthcare authority, not Lakewood's Choice. The Choice is the, is how they're implementing that, that set of requirements or programs. And the li, yeah, and the leadership team, eh, there's criteria regarding who's on your leadership team. And there's different representation of different groups and areas, and that's outlined again in the policy manual. So, um, and, and that's how that's set up.
So who, who appoints them? The healthcare authority?
Uh, uh, we'll check on that. I'm not exactly sure if they're, if they're.
How do they get there? Self-appointed, appointed by?
No, we'll, we'll find that out for you, how that, how that, um, they're made official.
If they're appointed as a committee, um, by the healthcare authority to advise the implementation of the program, then, then the health, healthcare authority would conceivably be the accountable entity.
And that, that's true, but I'll, we'll double-check that for you. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, they do.
It's a summary.
You know, it just seems we're discussing being a fiscal agent, but the document that we have gives us the role of contractor. You know, in, in, in the packet, because all the terminology is not fiscal agent. Terminology that the city would be signing would be signing as contractor.
I'm looking at page, uh, fifty-nine, paragraph one, E. Contractor means the individual or entity performing the services, which means it's contract. We're not performing services, which means it's contract. It's so subcontractors that the coalition hires directly, I mean, they know. The contractors between DSHS and the contractor, we're just facilitating, but.
Right. And that DSHS word's going to change to the healthcare authority because they, this year they just changed and they haven't, and since the budget was just approved, they haven't actually authorized the new contracts, but they're working on that. But exactly the same.
And, and, and an option would be to go back to the healthcare authority and say, we need clarification that we are the fiscal agent and not the contractor, we need that language in the contract. That's certainly doable.
We're, we're not the contractor. I'm just concerned that we don't have, we aren't, we aren't fiscally responsible for the compliance and someone else has the authority to direct it if. And what happened to the case, what was happening under a number of these contracts in the county was that the county was receiving money from the state or federal government. It was taking a minimum or a maximum, excuse me, amount allowed for administration. It was subcontracting with a nonprofit in the area that would then be responsible for doing the work. So there were two haircuts and then the Pierce County would hire people that cost more than the haircut that the county got to use, use and say. The question then, one of the county's part was, why be in the business of being a pass-through entity and losing money on it? Uh, and, and, and so they're shedding some of these.
Yeah, the real question is, yeah, we should be concerned about this. Are we going to be, how do we arrive at the number that we receive? Is that the number where we cover our costs to run, to run the contractor, we're the fiscal agent? How many checks are we going to have to, how much time are we spending every month? And the bills, that's the question.
Are you asking me that question?
I'm assuming you got it right.
Right.
I mean, the work is at the end of the hour, so.
Yeah, and we'll be tracking the program because it's new to us, so, but we do manage lots of different contracts. So without, without doing the work, we manage the contracts for the ki, you know, to make sure that the city's investment's correct. So we believe we'll be following those same types of tasks, just in a little bit different manner and sending the reports to a different person, but.
For instance, keep track of it, this is a poor class, but re-contractors and stuff. And we need to do that in this space to make sure we're on. I'm assuming you can keep track of it forward.
Mm-hmm.
Down, I'm chasing that. Right.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Any other questions? All right, you, thank you for creating a horninessness. Let's see. We move to a review of the home funding for Tacoma Pierce County Habitat for Humanity for the acquisition of property at twenty-six sixteen ninety-second Street South for the development of affordable housing. Mr. Gumm.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, deputy mayor, members of the council. Um, as the mayor mentioned, it's a proposal to fund Habitat. I don't have any fancy PowerPoints or anything, you just have me, so a little bit of a letdown tonight. The, the proposal would be to fund eighty-eight thousand dollars to Habitat to acquire a property um, in the northeast end of Lakewood, twenty-six sixteen ninety-second Av- Avenue South. Um, it's a property that was demolished in two thousand seventeen by the city of Lakewood as a dangerous building. Um, it would be a project that is kind of typical to the, to the home rules and regulations. It would be a, a program that would build a single-family house uh, that would provide low-income housing for, um, a home buyer. The funding would be through the city's Home Affordable Housing Fund, which is funds that we apply for through the Home Investment Partnership Act. Uh, those funds go through the annual action plan process and there's about a five-hundred-thousand-dollar balance in that fund right now. So the funds would be, um, already approved by council, that this project would just use those funds. The funding would be a proposed fifty percent developer loan grant combination. So there's a, a loan that is provided to Habitat, it's then passed on to the final home buyer. The home buyer has zero percent loans deferred until the first mortgage is paid off. Usually the first mortgage is through conventional financing. So, and as you're all aware, I like programs with rules and regulations, so why would I bring you an easy project? This one has the double rules and regulations. Not only do we have the, the home rules that are near and dear to our hearts, the copious recording and the contracts that nobody should possibly have to understand. This one has some city Lakewood municipal codes as well. So, um, this property is in the air corridor, uh, which makes it a little bit of a challenge. As, as I mentioned, it was a project that was demolished as part of a dangerous building abatement. So one thing that the project funding would do is reimburse the city of Lakewood for any expenses for that demolition, um, as well as interest. Um, as of last month, that was about fifty-four thousand dollars. So the city would recoup the fifty-four thousand dollars, uh, for their Fund One-O-five. Um, Habitat would then develop it into a single-family house. Their typical construction's about fifteen hundred square feet. The previous house that was on the site was a duplex, about twenty-seven hundred square feet. The lots, you know, the lot size is about ten thousand square feet. So looking at, uh, final lot coverage of fifteen percent, it used to be twenty-seven percent. So under the air corridor one, uh, there are requirements for zoning intensities. Uh, this would actually decrease the zoning intensity, it would decrease the lot size coverage. Um, so those are kind of good things in this case. The development in the AC one, again, it does allow for a non-conforming use, um, for a property that existed and that was a duplex. Um, it's a non-conforming use if you move forward with a single-family development versus a duplex. Um, it, it is consistent with AC one's encouragement to, uh, decrease or not expand existing uses. Um, and it is development, the development is consistent with what's there. There's, used to be thirteen duplexes in that development. The city demolished two of those, so there's eleven duplexes remaining. The houses to the west are single-family, uh, thirty to fifty, single-family houses to the north, um, they're single-family, there's a commercial lot. Um, it's a fairly large building to the east, so by and large, it's a residential community development. So it wouldn't meet with the existing, um, existing zoning, existing development. Uh, there, we, I did look into the, the ownership of the lots and, and most of the duplexes in there, they're either owned by owners or they're rental properties. So I wasn't able to see any, uh, anybody who'd acquired a number of those properties for future development, for industrial purposes or any of those things. Had we found that, uh, we would have followed up with the individual and seen what their intent was, industrial or, or single-family uses. Uh, we don't know of any industrial moving forward. Um, the development, kind of in a couple of good things. It, it does require, um, that the new structure is going to have noise attenuation standards. It's in the air corridor, so it's in the sixty-five decibel range. So there would be a requirement to have, um, I forget what it's called exactly. They would have a a noise attenuation, there we go, it's a disclosure statement. So when they, when they do develop the property, a noise disclosure statement is recorded with the deed and it basically acknowledges that they're in the air corridor in any construction and any, any new development or rehabbing of the property acknowledges the need for attenuation of noise for future development. Um, and it does require a developmental administrative use permit. So an administrative use permit is applied for, um, there's a number of requirements that, that are provided with that. It's, it's an administrative use permit granted by the development director. In this case, Mr. Viewer would review that and approve it. Um, and the administrative use permit does allow the city to restrict things like, uh, the footprint of the building, the bedroom sizes, the bathroom sizes, the, you can do landscaping requirements. There's, there's a number of things that are, are addressed with the administrative use permit. So it, it does give the city a, a bit of leeway that way. Um, and the development proposed would have to be consistent with the R three things like, uh, have to be consistent with the R3 things like landscaping, impervious surfaces, development standards and, and those sorts of things. So with that, does the council have any questions of the project or any of the mini rules?
Mr. Branstad.
I guess, Mr. Gumm, I'm a little surprised by your interpretation of this being an allowable project in the air corridor one zone. Given that there used to be a pre-existing non-conforming use that was grandfathered, but the city code says that once that use ceases or building is destroyed or taken down, that in order to continually engage and continue to have status for that non-conforming use, you have to have at least started to build something new within a year. That's in 18A, you know, of our code that talks about how do you end a non-conforming use? I mean, we've gone through a lot of discussions here about, we got a lot of non-conforming uses because they predated incorporation. But this property clearly has gone past the time limit to be grandfathered as a residential lot in a non-conforming use. And it's in the air corridor where we've had discussions that we are trying to convince the Pierce County Regional Council and the Puget Sound Regional Council that the, that, that the air corridor areas shouldn't be counted in when they're trying to deal with the residential calculations and population calculations going forward for growth in the city of Lakewood. You know, we're trying to not just reduce residence, we're trying to, in, in the long term, the comprehensive plan is to eliminate residential uses in the air corridor one and two zones and move them in, into other things. And if we're serious about the, the, the comprehensive plan, we're serious about being in line with the J-Loose and, and, and doing that. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not seeing that this just sort of automatically, well, it used to be a residential lot. It can still be a residential lot because it clearly fits the timelines to stop being one that we wrote into code of how to, how, how to, how to terminate non-conforming uses. And, you know, there are some other properties in the air corridor zone. And, and I, so I think that while I am very supportive of the mission of Habitat for Humanity and very appreciative of all, of all the things that they have done in other neighborhoods of the city, you know, I don't think that there, that it is good policy for us to be investing in residential development that is non-conforming in areas where we are. That, you know, because, because, because our, our goal is not to figure out how to allow non-conforming uses. Our goal is to try to reduce non-conforming uses.
Mr. Whelan. Why too? I'm a little curious. My work is there expanding in the AC1 corridor residential and when is, and our policy not to do so as far as I'm concerned. The other thing, I had a question just generically, if this were to, to proceed on the various requirements we can impart on Habitat for the development. You mentioned landscaping being one of them. One of the concerns I've had, I did a little tour around the city a week or so ago with some members of the city and staff and looking at the habitat developments in Tillikum, you know, we've been applauding their efforts in Tillikum. But after they're built, the landscaping is up and maintained and it's starting to look kind of ratty. So it seems to me we've got to have better teeth in whatever requirements we have. I know it's tough because once you build it and they turn it over to homeowner, it's tough to be the big brother or big sister on that. But we've got to do a better job of, of at least communicating the message that we're trying to help you out, but they got to help themselves out by keeping their properties up because otherwise it becomes more of a blight on the community. It's a problem, I think, in Tillikum.
Yeah, that's.
It's my understanding that those requirements are in habitats, contract arrangement, but they're not enforcing them.
They are. And that's, I had a conversation within the last six months probably with Maureen Vif, their CEO about that. So we had a conversation.
And bring it up with her in a van, driving past her projects to say, is this the standard that you expect?
Yeah.
For Habitat? Because we've invested a lot with your association.
Yeah, you know, I would agree. Some of, some of the things that they're trying to do to, to kind of deal with that is building garages now. So individuals can store things inside a garage versus out in their yard. So they're, they're working on a few things, but we, we have had that conversation. We will continue to have that conversation, see if we can get that addressed.
I would vote no on this one, in my perspective, but.
I don't, I don't see the exception, but Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. I'm with Councilmember Branstad. I guess I'm, I need to take a step back before I vote on this because I was always under the impression that this air corridor thing was ironclad. Like it was, we don't want people living there. I'm under the impression that, and so that my impression must be incorrect, but, but I'm under this impression that when we go through J-Loose and, and, and we're, we're talking to the Air Force and the Army about the air corridor and we've had debates here, sometimes spirited debates about what would be allowed. And we've agreed that it would be low-density employment, those kind of things rather than neighborhoods. So we've kind of painted this picture and then like Councilmember Branstad are mentioning, you know, we're even, well, we should go to the PSRC and how are we going to handle these whole areas where there's thousands of people living, but they really shouldn't be because they're, they've got these jets flying over them. So I, I'm, I'm confused as to the request because I didn't think that we were going to allow new building in this area. And, and, and if that's not ironclad, then I need to be, I, I need some help in trying to figure out, okay, if it's not ironclad, then what is it? I mean, if I, so there's a mobile home park I see right there, for instance. And if somebody bought the mobile home park and we're assuming, well, they'll make it industrial, but, or some type of business that meets the density, the employment density requirements, but now could I put in houses? And I thought, we've told people when the school left, the Old Oakwood School, that they couldn't build residential on there. That was my impression that we actually told people that. So I'm worried, I'm, I'm concerned about consistency and I'm, I'll be honest, I'm completely confused. If this is allowable, I'm, I'm, I need some more education.
I have to follow up on Councilmember Volkey's comments. If he's confused, I'm confused. And in my own simple way, I look at it as if you open the door for one, when does two come? And then three? And my understanding of the air corridor is, it's to be zero. That we have a, a policy in place that simply says, we are not going to allow population density to congregate in that area. And here we have a proposal to open the door. And like I say, if one goes through, then we'll see two, then we'll see three, and then we'll hear arguments about, well, you set a precedent. So I think we need to be, I'm, and I'm being somewhat facetious, Paul. You're absolutely right. Mike Branstad was absolutely right in his summation of what this is. And so I, I, I would not go forward with this at all. I would oppose this. Thank you.
And I think in a smaller scale, this is what got us into trouble. Us, not us individually, but us as an entity into trouble with the, the clear zone and building warehouses at the end of McCord. The policy was not to do that. And the city council yielded to political wins and said, go ahead and build them. And.
Buying back.
Now buying back for millions of dollars instead of buying the dirt. And so, you know, it is on a smaller scale. I, I am also concerned just parenthetically about right across the freeway at 96, there's a large triangular piece that's in, it's either unincorporated Pierce County or Tacoma. It's our, on the east side of the freeway at 96, it's been grubbed out. It's been.
Pierce County property, I believe.
What?
I believe it's unincorporated Pierce County.
Yeah, but it's been, yeah, I don't know what, what's going in there. Yeah. I don't, I have no idea what's going in there, but. Allowable, that's really is, yeah. It's just off the end of Oscar Holt's old cheap apartments. Wish Whelan knows well. All right. Well, I think you've got the sentiment of the council. I will hope to find Habitat great places to build homes, but it doesn't sound like this council feels an exception as warranted in this case. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. We now move to this review of the six-year tip. Mr. Bucic and Mr. Ott.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, deputy mayor, members of the council. So this is a brief update on the changes to the 2020, 2025 six-year tip. So this is our schedule here on slide two. So here we are this evening. We're reviewing it at study session. Wednesday I'll be at Planning Commission. The public hearing has been advertised and will be, is scheduled for May 20th and then with that tentative adoption, June 3rd. So why we do the tip, there's a couple of reasons. One, it's a requirement by law for cities to have their tip adopted and, and sent to the Secretary of Transportation by July 1st. When we go after grant funding, most grants require that your project's either in the tip or the CIP. And then we also use this as the basis for budget development of the six-year capital improvement program as part of the budget process. So celebrating some of our successes, in 2018, we had a very robust construction year. The projects in red and blue are those that were completed in 2018. 2019, we're already, it seems like almost to the middle of the year, but we've already kicked off a number of these projects. Gravely Lake Drive, we're just down to striping. Colonial Plaza is, we've turned a lot of dirt and moving ahead on that one. 123rd as well. And Project 66 Custer Road, which will complete the overlay of that corridor, is tentatively scheduled Tucci to start June 3rd. So we have a, a lot of construction. And as well as the chip seal continuing on, the projects in green are those under design. And the reason I bring this up is the projects that under, are under design would continue in the tip, but those constructed this year would be taken out of the tip because it is from 2020 to 2025. And I have a slide later that shows what's removed. So as a summary of what we did with the tip this year, it is aligned with the budget, our six-year CIP 2019 through 2024. It matches project numbering, the budget, the time value of money. Completed projects have been removed. In the past, we had corridors that had, had been sectioned up for various reasons and we've combined those together. So they're a coherent section with a single numbering system. We have added in the downtown Siberia Plan projects that weren't already in the tip. And then one thing we did this year, we haven't done in the past, is we sat down with the directors from Community Development, Parks, Operations and Maintenance, sat down with them and talked over what projects they saw, the city, that met the city's needs. We have added some of those as in this tip. And then we are working on a list of additional projects that we are vetting the scope and the cost estimate for. And as always, we continue to look at our pavement condition, our accident location, our traffic data to see if anything pops on, up on that. So these are those projects I had mentioned that are coming out of the tip. Great projects that are being completed or constructed this year. The next slide, these are what's added to the tip beyond anything that was combined or matched the CIP. And 150th Street to the, from Woodbrook to the city limits, that road has been one that, it's a thin, very old pavement and we've been fighting that to get it patched. And so we need to do a little bit more work out there to get that road in good passable condition. 146th Street, that's one that's popped up with all the industrial development out there in Woodbrook. Previously, we'd focused more along Murray Road and 150th, but we have all those developments coming in along 146. So we need to take a look at that from an industrial section standpoint. Custer Road between Bridgeport and Lakewood Drive is in a, we have some patching coming up here real quick. We did award a patching contract. So some of that delamination will be patched here shortly. But that's a road that needs looked at in, in total. It's kind of a gap piece between Tacoma and then our work to the west of Bridgeport. Lake Louise is in, around that loop there is another situation where we have a very old road that needs some additional attention. So we are looking at ways that we can keep that road in good condition. And then the last three projects are those identified in the downtown Siberia Plan. The first one being the Green Street Loop, which is a rectangle where Main and 59th are the north-south pieces of the rectangle. Or pardon me, I said that backwards. Gravely Lake Drive and 59th are the north-south pieces. And then the north would be Mount Tacoma and the south would be Main Street on that rectangle. And then the roundabout at 59th and then a right turn pocket at 100th and Lakewood Drive. So those are the three projects that weren't already identified in the previous tip. So we continue to look at our, our data. We look at accident data in, in intersection and that can be signalized or unsignalized. And we look at a history, so a one-year, a three-year, a five-year. Often we get asked, well, what's your highest accident location? So in 2018, over there by the Red Robin, the Gravely Avondale intersection was the city's highest accident location. Yes, there, you know, I drive through there every day and we have plenty of sight distance. I, I think it's an issue of those behind the wheel versus anything that we can do. Right. And it is in the six-year tip. So again, we, we can. So again, we, we continue to look at our, our traffic volumes. Uh, those are, uh, updated and so we keep an eye on that and as well as our pavement condition. And again, the city ranks very high, uh, with respect to our peers. And I know you've seen this slide before. This is the, the most updated one. Um, our investment in the city is, uh, shown here that our, uh, average for the entire city, our pavement condition index is seventy-eight and that continues to move up. And so that's something we can be very proud of. We're very proactive in having a good transportation network and keeping it in good shape. Uh, so with that, uh, I'd be happy to enter and entertain any questions. I do have a typo on here that's actually Lakewood Drive, um, looking north. Previously, I did have a picture of Gravely and switched it last minute and missed that, so.
I thought you, uh, when you were talking about, uh, our peers, that you might be talking about deconstructing the Lake Silicon Bridge and just have two fishing piers instead of.
Uh, I see, yeah, that. So we had hoped Wash Dot would be able to get that wrapped up today so that we could open the bridge back up, but. Yeah, the picture's almost a little scary how open that is, so. Yeah, we, we decided it would not be in the best interest of the city to open that up today.
Questions for Mr. Ott. Thank you much.
Thank you very much.
Oh, Mr. Brenstetter asked a question.
Scott, thank you for the, putting this together and getting the process started and moving forward. I had, uh, two suggestions. In the section in the narrative at the beginning where you talk about city funding sources, um, I noticed that the, um, the fee, impact fee, or whatever we call it, for the central business district for downtown, that we approved, when we approved that plan as a, as a revenue source, it isn't listed as a city source. And even though it doesn't look like we're really going to be spending any money from that source because it's going to take a while for things to be there, uh, there are a few things that are there and I, I would look to list it. And at the same time, given the downtown area plan over the next couple of decades of where we're, we've got a specific list of projects that were included in that and they don't all fit into the six-year window. Uh, a couple of them are on here, you know, and the Avondale Project, the Green Street Loop to do that. But for tracking purposes, you might, whether maybe, whether or not for this version, but in a, in a future, uh, version of the, of the tip, create a separate section for downtown projects that, uh, because they, because they're all tied together by that one particular funding source. And we're going to, we want a very transparent to show people that, who are contributing to that revenue source, that the projects that that revenue source is for, and it's a fixed list, um, are, are actually being proposed and moving forward. Um, something that perhaps for, for next year's tip, you might want to look at sorting some of those projects that now could appear in several different sections. And I did appreciate that on the, on at least on the, on the Green Street Loop that you put an annotation that it was a downtown plan project.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
We continue to, uh, receive compliments from the citizenry regarding cement and asphalt. You're doing a great job. Mr. Caulfield, City Manager Report.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Um, which is relates to tonight's agenda. I just wanted to confirm that item number five, the home funding, you do not want us to bring that back to you for consideration as part of your regular meeting next Monday. Is that a fair assumption on my part? And, uh, you know, one of the primary reasons that that was brought forward is because, as, uh, Mr. Gumm pointed out, the zoning code says that, um, you know, it allows for the continuation of existing legal uses in that, in that zone. So, um, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go back and talk with Mr. Buwer and as part of Title eighteen A to draft language to, quite frankly, say to not allow for the, um, construction of existing legal uses within the zone. To further ratchet that down based on what I heard from, from the council this evening. Existing legal uses, existing legal uses, because right now
Pre-existing.
That's correct. And so
Pre-existing.
That's correct. But to further ratchet it, ratchet it down so that we don't end up in this kind of a situation.
Somebody's, somebody's, like, Mr., I think Mr. Brenstetter pointed out, there's a time limit and, and somebody's house burns down, their, their garage catches fire, hit by a tree, they should be able to reconstruct it.
That's different.
That's a different thing.
That's a different issue. That's correct, Mayor.
Waiting two years.
That's correct. But, um, but I think now would be a good time to look at that since we're looking at Title eighteen A. And then on, on, uh, the Lakewood, uh, Choice Agreement, um, I'm, I'm going to ask that we bring that back at your next study session on May twenty-eighth. There's some, I just want to, you know, cross all the Ts, dot all the Is there. But at the end of the day, the city's role there is to be fiscal, the fiscal agent. And so I think what I'd like to do for the council is put together some kind of a flow chart or a table showing, um, you know, roles and responsibilities, including who the authority is in terms of, um, you know, being responsible for the funding and things along those lines. So more to, more, more to come, more to come on that. Next Monday, um, we're supposed to have representatives of, uh, the twenty-eighth and the twenty-ninth Legislative District here for you to recognize them. However, uh, we learned, um, today that, uh, they all now want to come on July first as part of your July first regular meeting. So that's the latest update that we have. That's correct. That, that one, that one proclamation, yes, that is correct. Wanted to, uh, uh, switch gears real quick to the federal side. Um, as you know, one of our really, uh, um, lead priorities there is the Defense Community Infrastructure Program. And, uh, you know, that program was authorized last year by Congress, so the city of Lakewood has been involved in the creation of federal law. However, the program has yet to be funded. Um, what I can tell you is that the momentum continues to build to fund that program. Um, the request right now that's floating out there is a hundred million dollars. This is also a, if not the number one priority, a key priority for the Association of Defense Communities. Um, and here in Washington State, we have legislators in the right place at the right time to be able to make this happen, this, this session. Uh, for example, Congressman Heck, who is of course the primary sponsor of this, he has a letter of support from twenty-two members of Congress, um, you know, making this happen. Also, it's bipartisan, fifty-fifty. Um, we have Representative Derek Kilmer, who is on the Defense Appropriation Subcommittee on the House side. The reason that's important is because once the House budget comes out, which is currently making its way, he will be in a position to then allocate the money, money there. On the Senate side, Senator Murray is on the, um, Defense Appropriation Subcommittee on the Senate side. So she'll be able to, um, you know, um, you, you know, make a, make an appropriation, um, once it comes over to the Senate and support that. Um, also, we have the support, of course, of Adam Smith, who is the Chair of the Armed Services Committee. And then Senator Cantwell has actually, uh, testified in support of this. And so she's a huge, huge backer of this. So, um, right now, things are moving and again, the momentum is moving. Um, and, uh, so I just wanted to report that out, that this is again for our delegation, not just Congressman Heck. You know, um, really a number one priority, um, coming out of, coming out of Washington, coming out of Washington State. And of course, um, if it is approved, we're anticipating that the Office of Economic Adjustment, whom we have a very, very good working relationship with, will ultimately be the caretaker of that program. And, uh, so knock on wood, um, since we did kind of lead this effort nationwide, we're hoping that we will be rewarded um, and that we will get the funding, uh, to be able to, um, you know, rebuild Washington Boulevard as it connects into, uh, Northgate and into JBLM. Also, um, as you heard this evening, um, the, 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 the state legislature funded, uh, that, that roadway in Pierce County adjacent to Dupont, you know, three-point-nine-million-dollar, um, uh, project. So that takes competition away from us, um, which is also very, very positive. So we're in a really good situation right now. And of course, we will continue our dialogue and communication with our, with our delegation, um, on, on that. That's correct. That's exact, yep, it's already done. It's great, yep, so. Because the state has stepped up, so. Um, here at the local front, um, uh, we did, uh, hear directly back from, uh, the property owner of the Starlight Swap Meet that he will be closing the swap meet at the end of this month. And so we went ahead and posted that on our website and our Development Services page just to let folks know. Um, dangerous building abatements, um, we issued a notice of complaint for Carwan Village last week. It was a very, very lengthy report, so it took a, took some time to put that together. Uh, Mr. Gumm is now working on, uh, what we call the former QFC building and then is waiting from the fire department and the insurance folks on, on the Denny's. But the QFC, um, notice of complaint should probably go out this week or early, or early next week, uh, to that, to that property owner. The state auditor's office is going to hold an entrance conference this year for us. Uh, and so that's scheduled for this Tuesday afternoon at one-thirty in my office. So if you're interested in attending, please, please let me know. Um, it should be about maybe ten or fifteen minutes at the, at the, at the most. Um, Association of Washington City is having their annual conference in Spokane in June. It's from June twenty-sixth through June twenty-eighth. I know myself, uh, Councilmember Brenstetter and, uh, Shannon Kelly-Fong will be attending. And if there's any interest from anyone else on this body who wishes to attend, you know, let us know. City of Lakewood will once again be recognized at that event, at the Wednesday afternoon, uh, luncheon for our rental housing, um, safety program. So again, if there's any interest in attending, it is a good, they do have some, you know, good, good sessions and I do recommend it, um, for, for elected officials. And, uh, so again, if you're interested in attending, let us know. Uh, we completed the bond sale, uh, last week based on the ordinance the council adopted last month. The, um, true interest cost came in at a little over two-point-six percent, um, which is, that's really good. So I just want to tip my hat to Todd Kraus and her strategy on, um, um, getting into the market and getting those bonds issued and getting the money, money, money collected.
Does she base her, uh, budget allocation on rate of interest, remember?
Oh, God, four percent.
So we're doing
Oh, yeah, we're doing
I thought it was great.
We're doing fantastic.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, as you know, we take a very, I won't say very, well, we take a conservative approach in terms of how do we, how we manage our financial resources, yep. Uh, probably about a hundred thousand or so a year, yeah. But again, you know, real estate excise tax, again, we were conservative, it, you know, it fluctuates, so, yeah, we want to be, yep, better be safe than sorry. So, um, next week, I think, as I reported to this body, um, a gentleman by the name of Kevin Grease, uh, who is the Deputy Garrison Commander of the U.S. Army Garrison in Rhineland Falls, which is in Germany, will be joining our organization as part of a fellowship program through ICMA, the International City County Management Association. It's a fellowship that was, uh, created between ICMA and the Department of Defense to essentially marry up garrison or deputy garrison commanders with city managers and county managers since, you know, in many aspects, we deal with the same issues and same situations. So he'll be, um, spending five days on the ground, shadowing me as well as other members of my team, you know, learning about who and what we are and, uh, how we, how we, how, how we operate. Um, one of the things that he's looking for is actually two things. One is learning about, quote, "the art of city management." And he's also looking about, you know, how we interact with our legislative body. It is an art, come on, really? Come on, Mayor, jump in and help me out here. Come on, you, you, on your day hat, come on. I'm getting no love. I'm getting no love, I'm not.
If I come, if I, if I skate over to help you out, I'm in the penalty box.
He's also interested to learn about, you know, how the innovative, you know, practices that we take on and how we inter- interact with the community and, you know, just, uh, basically how we manage our resources. So looking forward to having him here for a week. It's a full itinerary. Um, on Monday, just to give you a courtesy heads up, you probably will not get a call from me. Uh, because, um, um, I'll be, I'll be, yeah, through, through, through the whole week. Um, and, uh, I know I have a couple of meetings with sitting council members and so, um, he'll be, he'll be joining, he'll be joining those as well. So, and he'll be here next Mon- he'll be here next Monday evening as well. So I'm removing, removing all the controversial, controversial stuff from your agenda so that, so it looks like, you know, so it is the art of city management. Also, uh, later this week on Thursday morning, uh, SSMCP is having their annual elected officials council. Uh, yes, Deputy Mayor, there will be food. So at zero seven-thirty. It's Thursday morning. It's Thursday morning. And then on Friday morning at seven-thirty, and again, Deputy Mayor, there will be food. Uh, there'll be our annual volunteer appreciation event, so twice in one week. That's at seven-thirty, that's at seven-thirty as well. Um, no, it'll be at, uh, Clover Park Technical College Rotunda. So, um, and actually, of course, um, we would invite the mayor or any member of the council if you want to say some things. Okay, thank you.
But what, what morning is that again?
Friday on the volunteer
Friday the seventeenth, I got it.
Zero seven-thirty. Um, and then on Friday, we have the, the Ray Evans Memorial Fishing Event. Again, more food potentially. And, uh, and then, uh, JBLM will be having their annual Armed, Armed Forces Day on, on, on base.
On the eighteenth?
On the eighteenth. That is correct. And, um, I believe, Mayor, I believe that's my report this evening.
Questions for the city manager? Are, is a, is a visiting deputy garrison commander going to bring a, a victorial remembrance of all the B and Bs that, uh, Mr. Wayland stayed on on maneuver?
B and Bs, that's a good one, Mayor, I like that. I like that a lot. Actually, I think we just need to track down his driver. I think his driver will have, uh, the location of where all those B and Bs were.
Any other questions for him? Well, thank you much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Council comments, Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, briefly, I did attend the Joel Thelblad, a council walk on Saturday. I was there from twelve to one-thirty and that was approximately fifty to seventy-five people in participation, but of the people coming in, so I don't know what the in total was. But it was small, but very powerful. I did enjoy the Lakes High School student artwork. It was very nice display. Operation Red at Saint Martin's University was a lot of fun as always. They had about three or four hundred enlistees, which was, uh, was good. But then one they had the night before in Seattle was like six to seven hundred, which we understand that. And I did attend the Clover Park High School Board Meeting tonight. And I wanted to talk about, I'll tell you that the Lakes High School won the triple A and I don't know what it was. I didn't get the word of what it, they won the triple A something for the state. And they were awarding them tonight, but I came in, I didn't catch what it was that they were awarding and they wanted, yeah, it was a triple A, but I didn't get the final portion of that. And I thought it might be a good idea for us to recognize them at one of our council meetings at some point. I'll find out what it is, but I'm sorry, I just, yeah. I just heard triple A and I got excited, but I didn't write down what it was. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Really, uh, all I've got is, um, I went to the annual Lakes High School Photography Art Thing and several other members were there actually, um, at Saint Clair and really enjoyed it. And, um, wonderful photography, it really is. And, and I know, uh, Mr. Wesley, uh, the teacher, spoke with the city manager too and had some interesting remarks about the popularity of the photography programs there at Lakes. And, um, just really some really neat photographs. And so, um, so they'll be up for the next year and, um, and a lot of good food. So Deputy Mayor, you could have had this great fudge they did there. So I, no, I really do appreciate the Saint Clair's consistency on this. I think it's the seventh year, is that what they said? Um, so, you know, their consistent work on this and, and, and I appreciate the students' consistency and their quality effort.
Mr. Mayor, I also attended the Operation Red, uh, you know, and got to dish out noodles and pizza to
and pizza to folks that were there. But it was, General Valeski was the presiding officer that administered the oath of enlistment. I remember my first time I was enlisted, I had a second lieutenant who maybe had three days in grade that administered mine, so those folks appreciated that. But the color guard for that event was from the Army ROTC at Lakes High School. And they did a job, and it was a color guard of all young women. So they're all young women on the color guard, the five of them, so that was very interesting. And I did also appreciate the event at Saint Clair with the photography, the changeover of the exhibition of photographs that are there, being able to go and do that. And the hospital food that was served was tolerable. And that the temporary CEO of Saint Clair spoke, and for the first time in the number of times I've gone to that event, she highlighted the therapeutic value of all of those photos that are in the hallway just off the emergency room and at the main entrance, and how they have that sort of an effect on many folks who are there in times of stress or discomfort to be able to go and do that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.